Good evening and welcome to the July 12, 2011 meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Menuchaian, Najarian, Quintero, Weaver, Mayor Friedman.
Here. I'm going to ask Mr. Weaver to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join with me in our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation, which will be delivered to us by Laconyada Congregational Church Pastor Reverend Skip Lindman.
Let us pray. Oh God, we ask your blessing on our meeting this evening. We thank you for choosing us to do the people's business. Help us to be fair in our deliberations. Help us to respect others, especially those who may disagree with us. Give us a spirit of unity even amidst disagreement. Thank you, God, for this wonderful country where the people rule and not tyrants. And thank you for letting us live in this wonderful community of Glendale. Amen.
Thank you.
Can we hear your report, please?
The agenda for the July 12, 2011 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 7, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Great. Next item, please.
Presentation and appointments at 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of July 19, 2011.
Thank you, Ms. Beers.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. Also, for the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, we have no business agenda items. We do, however, have a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency commencing at 2:30. This is Director of Community Development, Community Services and Parks, and of Libraries. And this is regarding the development impact fee payment option. That afternoon, we also have another joint public meeting of the G.R.A. and the Glendale Housing Authority. This is a proposal to enter into an affordable housing agreement with Mercy Housing California, a California nonprofit corporation in support of development of an affordable multifamily rental housing project at 203 to 215 West Los Feliz Road. That evening, for the Glendale City Council meeting, we do have an adoption of an ordinance. This is an urgency ordinance authorizing participation in the alternative voluntary redevelopment program, as well as ordinance authorizing participation in the -- oh, this is offered twice, excuse me. Action items: Fire Chief, Glendale Hazardous Mitigation Plan update; General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. This is a recommendation to declare the city-owned property located at 3445 Altera Avenue to be surplus property and to authorize the public auction of said property. Director of Human Resources, this is an M.O.U., memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale, as well as the Glendale Police Officers Association. And Director of Human Resources, this is regarding classification and compensations for employees of the City of Glendale Police Officers Association. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Our next item is City Council and staff comments. Are there any City Council comments? Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I would like to, with a heavy heart, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in the honor of Roy Coleman. He was a friend and a former civil service commissioner. Roy passed away at his home in Glendale in his sleep. He survived by his wife Marilyn, his brothers Richard and Tom, as well as many cousins, nephews, and nieces. He served in the Marine Corps and was wounded by an artillery shell in Kaysan and spent many years recuperating in different hospitals and basically was in pain for the rest of his life, although he made it a point not to show it. He, after the war, using the Jihad Bill, he got his bachelor's degree from Loyola University and he began a long career in public service, beginning as a Veterans Rep. with the Employment Development Department in Hollywood. That's where I met him many years ago. And then he went on to the Department of Fair Employment and Housing, and he ended his years as a hearing officer for the State of California as a Fair Employment and Housing. And as I mentioned, he then served on the Glendale Civil Service for six years. He's a wonderful guy, an avid sports fan. He loved the Dodgers and the Raiders when they were around, and a very loving person, fond of his family, and if you were his friend, you had a friend for life. He was a man of strength and just a generous and loving soul, and he's going to be missed by everyone. He was just a wonderful man, and like I say, he struggled with the severe wound that he received, but always went out of his way not to complain or even to let people know that kind of suffering that that wound entailed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. I would like to have brought up for a discussion and possibly a resolution for a council position on several bills that are going through Sacramento. I think if there's any lesson that we've learned in the last six months, it's that we can't assume that they're going to do anything good up there. Anyway, I have some bills here I'd like to present to council and have our input on in terms of a resolution. A.B. 438, A.B. 455, S.B. 469, A.B. 506, A.B. 646, S.B. 931. And I'll give this list to staff so they can pull those out and take a look at the context of those bills, and I think it's something that would be great if we could weigh in on. I'm going to let you do the talking on the great seminar that we went to.
Sure.
To Madam Mayor, to place a matter on the agenda, is there --
I'm -- I'll second it.
On all of the bills?
Why don't we do them all at once and maybe -- I don't know how the council feels, but maybe we should have some sort of policy about how we evaluate legislation, whether we do this on a regular basis or ask out one of our staff members to sort of track bills that might impact the city and bring them to us when there's something that we might want to pass a resolution on. Because I agree with Mr. Najarian that the last few months have showed us that we can't be complacent, and maybe we should just as matter of policy have review and reporting to council on, you know, whatever, a monthly basis about legislation that affects the city. But would you allow that to go back as well?
Sure, that would be fine. All right.
Mr. Menuchaian?
Yes. I received -- this is common period, right?
Yes.
I received a letter from the Glendale Water and Power regarding the smart meter that they installed at my house, and the smart meter apparently said that I'm using more electricity than more -- than most of my neighbors. Just for the record, one of my neighbors is an elderly individual, single person, and the person across the street from me is another elderly person, single again, my mother-in-law. Hello. And across the other side is a couple who are elderly as well. And my household, I are five individuals with three teenagers. So I did not need a smart meter to tell me that I'm using more electricity than everybody else. I just want to make that clear, and that without the smart meters, I could have told you that I use more electricity than anyone else, especially on, you know, personal hygiene products like hair dryers and straighteners and stuff like that. So, other than that, I would like to inquire actually from the city attorney regarding California Code 54957.2, which allows legislative body to designate an officer to keep and enter in a minute book, record of the topics discussed and decisions made at the meeting. Do we currently have an individual that -- I know you take extensive notes, but are you the designated individual who keeps a minute of the legislative body, of the closed session of the legislative body, the topics and everything that is discussed?
Madam Mayor, members of --
And the minute book, sorry, and that minute book should be available to the legislative -- it's not public records, but it should be available to the legislative body for inspection or copying or whatever.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the section that Mr. -- Councilmember Menuchaian refers to is a section in the Brown Act that provides for the voluntary keeping of a minute book by a person that is designated. Sometimes it's a clerk, sometimes a city clerk, sometimes it's someone else. There's a split amongst cities that actually do that. Many don't do it, and some do. The short answer is that, no, I am not the designated individual. We do not have a designated individual to keep minutes in closed session. Any notes that are kept are personal notes.
In that case, I would like to request that this matter be put on the agenda and any issues -- and we keep a minute book for closed-session items in accordance with the code section that I mentioned. I hope that there's a second and --
I'm not sure I understand the context of that. If we could have a report on that with the statute, so I can better understand. I thought we were referring to Mr. Kasakian. You had a very --
Well, no, it says clerk or officer. It doesn't have to be Mr. Kasakian, but I think a report would be fine, and that's what I would expect.
I can provide you an attorney-client privileged memorandum on the statute, what it says.
Why does it have to be --
And like, well, it depends on what the council --
Attorney-client.
Because the attorney is providing --
I would like to put it on the agenda and discuss it. Why does it need to be client -- attorney-client privilege?
First of all, I haven't heard a second to have it on the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second to --
There's a report that you -- that the council has collectively or by --
I think Mr. Elliott seconded it.
If only he had the authority.
All right.
Did you say Mr. Allen or Mr. Elliott?
Elliott.
Oh.
My point is, absent a -- two council member -- a council member had a second seeking to have it placed on the agenda in any form, I could, as a fallback matter, provide a report on the interpretation of the statute for --
I think you should.
For the council, and then after reading that, if you decide you want to bring that up another council meeting, you can do that.
After reading the report, I probably will be persuaded to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I just need to see what it says before I commit to a discussion on an issue. So, happy to give you a presentation.
That's fine. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Weaver, do you have any comments?
No.
My only comment is that last weekend, I attended a conference of the Independent Cities Association, which is a body made up of independent cities, which is generally cities that have their own police or fire in the Los Angeles region. Attending with me was Councilmember Quintero and Councilmember Najarian. And it's a conference that we tend to go to twice a year, at least it's available to us twice a year. I find it extremely valuable because it's one of the only times where we're together with other cities that are like our city to talk about the issues that affect all of our cities. There were two days of seminars, almost all-day-long seminars. I attended seminars on topics ranging from pension reform to marijuana and open carry gun laws, to social media and Facebook for elected officials, and how you can communicate with your constituents using this new technology, on managing in a time of stress, which is a very timely, kind of seminar to go to and very helpful. You know, when you get elected as a representative, as a council member, it doesn't come automatically with leadership lessons, with management lessons. So it's nice to go to a place where you have targeted instruction, you know, and workshops on how to manage a city and deal with your constituents. And then a big theme, we had a couple of seminars about what's happening in Sacramento. And the basic theme was that in the last year and certainly since, Bell has become an issue, that there seems to be a full frontal assault from Sacramento on the cities around the state. And we've seen that really come to a head with the takeaway of redevelopment, which was really the city's only way of fostering economic and job -- economic development and job creation within our cities. But there's also a host of bills behind that that really show that Sacramento thinks that they've done such a great job of managing the state that they should now be in a position of managing cities. So everything from how we can have meetings, when we can hold meetings, to how our cities are governed, to what we can do in terms of outsourcing. There's a bill that would say that, I think if Santa Clarita wanted to outsource the management of their libraries, so Sacramento decided that, no, no, cities shouldn't be allowed to decide things like outsourcing a library, or I guess by extension, lots of other departments, that Sacramento is going to make that decision for them, to when a city could declare bankruptcy, to even, in the case of Vernon, when a city would be able to operate as a city. It was interesting. It was an eye-opening seminar. For me, as an elected local official, it was very alarming. I think that we've done a pretty good job managing Glendale, and I don't know about you, but I'd rather have us here, who represent the people directly, who are known by the people of Glendale by face and by name, I'd rather have us governing the city than Sacramento. I think we've done a pretty decent job. Mr. Quintero.
Well, I just wanted to -- there were a lot of different ideas thrown out by the speakers, including a gentleman named Ron Bates, who's a longtime city manager, actually Ph.D. from USC, and he had quite a few, I think, decent ideas that are worth exploring in the future. But what I found interesting was the statistic that 4% of the purse capital actually goes to pay the pensions for the employees. I would have thought it was a much larger percentage of the total capital that purse has, but in fact, it's only 4%. And then I was very surprised about how many cities in L.A. County are having issues with the open carry law, which is basically the idea that you can wear a sidearm on your person when you go to banks, bars, restaurants, et cetera.
Council meetings?
Council meetings. We could actually come, including members of the audience. I immediately thought, should think about buying Mr. Mo Hill a pistol, maybe. Right. But anyway, I would have thought that that perhaps would have been more of an issue in a more rural setting, but evidently, it's an issue here in L.A. County, much to my surprise. But all of the pension discussions were particularly interesting and informative.
Najarian.
And just to touch on a couple things, I took an extra two hours of ethics training, even though I don't need to. At least in my opinion, I don't. I did have a chance to speak to the gentleman who spoke on pension reform. I got to the seminar late Friday after work and asked him, "Well, what did I miss? Oh, we've got these great new ideas. No one else is doing it in California." I said, "Oh, really? Like what?" "Oh, like a second-year pension." "Oh, we're doing that." "Oh, like having the employee contribute to the employer's first contribution." I said, "Oh, we already do that," on and on. So many of the, what they see as cutting-edge pension reform tactics have been implemented. The only thing he did say is that the retirement for public safety, I was sort of bragging that we were at, we went to 355 for our new tier. He says, "Oh, that's not good enough. You've got to at least get to age 60, because what you're experiencing is a large turnover of your otherwise productive workers in public safety." And I said, "Well, it's better, easier said than done." I think he agreed that all the other cities need to get up to a certain level where one city can't be pointed to as the bad guy and face a flight or a draining of their employees to another city. If everyone came up to a certain level and the playing field were level, I think there would be a certain momentum towards pension reform that would have some lasting effects on sustainability on the budgets. So. Little comment.
And just lastly, I was also appointed to be the treasurer of the I.C.A. going into next year. So, it's a bit of an honor, an expected honor. Are there any staff comments? Okay, seeing none. Next item, please.
Next item is consent items, and the following or routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motions are proposed.
Thank you.
I'd like to pull items C. and E.
Okay, can we have --
C. and E?
C. and E.
C. and E, as in --
I'll move the remaining of the calendar.
Second?
Okay. I have a card for 5D, so let's pull 5D as well. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the remainder of the calendar? And we have a roll call?
That would be for 1, 5A, B, and F.
Correct.
Councilmembers Menuchaian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes. Okay.
5C is Director of Public Works regarding fiscal year 2010-11 Slurry Seal Program. At C1, motion awarding a construction contract to American Asphalt South, Inc. in an amount of $506,102.55 and rejecting all other bids.
Okay, before we have a staff report, Mr. Menuchaian, was there a specific question?
Yes, I would like to know. It says Maintenance District 12. I don't know what that district is. If you could tell --
Madam --
Oh, I'm sorry. If you could tell me more about, I think whenever we're doing infrastructure improvements, I think it's important to inform the community what it is. They're great projects, so I wanted to know what the district is and what is the scope of the work.
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Menuchaian, Maintenance District 12 is the extreme northern part of the city. This is this, probably the last, maybe 25 to 30% of that area that we needed to slurry seal. The previous amounts were done, some of you may recall, in the middle of the fire and subsequent storms that we had to suspend. So this is generally the Montrose-LacRicena area, and this is a slurry seal application, which was a liquefied application to the street to prolong its life and improve the ride quality.
And you do have, it says, removal and reconstruction of damaged asphalt concrete pavement. Does it include removal as well, or is it just a slurry seal?
It does, and Mr. Galani and our city engineer can give you some detail on what aspects of the project include that. Generally, this is slurry seal, but there are some --
Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Menuchaian, there will be included in this project selective removal of damaged pavement.
Not all of it.
Not all of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'll move the item.
Any other questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Menuchaian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes. Next item, please.
5D is Chief of Police regarding U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program. At D1 is a resolution authorizing participation in the program. At D2 is a resolution appropriating $39,312.38 to provide funds for the program.
Okay, I have a card. Richard Espirito.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. Regarding this item, after reading the Glendale news press, and there was some young guy running around South Glendale with a .357 Magnum, I am very much in favor of the City of Glendale going ahead and acquiring this money to buy bulletproof vests for our police officers. My only question regarding the acquisition of the bulletproof vest, will they be able to stop a .357 Magnum or an AK-47 bullet? Because we do have MS-13 floating around the City of Glendale in and around, and that's one of their weapons of choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menuchaian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes.
Assuming those motions were for 1, Items 1 and 2, both resolutions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
E is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding implementation of computerized maintenance management system, CMMs software project. At E1, is motion authorizing the city manager, where he's designated to execute a professional services agreement with Woolpert, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $457,814.
Hey, Mr. Menuchaian.
This is a contract for half a million dollars for computer management system?
That's correct.
Did we have a computer management system before?
We had a computerized maintenance management system that was built in-house.
Okay. It's not working?
It's not working. It's obsolete. It's clearly not meeting our needs.
And this is just for the water department? What about the electric department?
City Works is a standard software that we, I believe, will be using citywide. This is the integration for the water department's applications.
Just for the water department, or?
That's correct.
So it's not, it cannot be used for the electric department?
That's correct. The company would be helping integrate the water department's data for the water department's use.
And we don't need one for the electric department? Computer maintenance management system?
I can't speak for the electric department. This item was vetted through Glendale Water and Power, and I believe that if the electric department felt they had a need at this time, they would have recommended we go to --
Half a million dollars is a big contract for a computer maintenance management system.
We believe it's a fair price to pay.
Was there competitive bidding on this, or was it a software company that staff selected and that was the price?
The vendor of the software certifies consultants that can do this type of work. We issued a request for proposals among the certified consultants. We got five proposals. We interviewed two of them and selected this one.
We should note that the data is in your staff report. The proposals range from $613,000 from one of the firms to a low of $233,000. The recommended number ranges about a little above midpoint of the five firms that submitted proposals. There's an analysis in the staff report that indicates why they chose who they chose.
Are we going to have to hire someone to continually maintain the system?
The contract includes training that would accrue onto our employees. We do anticipate that we would have to have a small, ongoing support contract in the order of about $20,000 to $25,000 per year in the future after the system is implemented.
And how's this going to benefit the city in terms of what we didn't have before and what we have now?
We believe this will give better maintenance at a lower cost for the city. It'll help us understand the maintenance costs and help us make better maintenance decisions.
Maintenance of the water infrastructure?
Pumps, motors, yes.
And we don't have that at this point?
We have the, what I would call, a rudimentary system that's been in place for decades that was a homegrown system that we believe is no longer working well.
Mr. Menuchaian, Peter, it might be useful to explain bulk of the work that goes into the cost, the development of the database for the infrastructure system. I know you noted in the staff report the large number of infrastructure items. You might just mention that.
We do have, thank you, Jim, we have, the water system comprises of a very large number of components, including pump stations for potable system, pump stations for the recycled water system. We have a lot of appliances, and we have two treatment plants. We have 35 storage facilities. In total, over 70 sites that we need to operate and maintain, and a lot of equipment. So this is really helping us keep it all together, but better than just a log of saying some maintenance needs to be done somewhere, it helps us accumulate the cost associated with each maintenance action and help us make the decision of, is this warranted and are we doing it too soon or too late?
I've heard many times that our water infrastructure is behind by, I don't know how many, 20 years or something. Is that correct? Is this going to help alleviate some of that, some of those issues where we can put some of the funds that we have in terms of improving the water infrastructure?
Absolutely. This is helping us make smarter decisions about how we spend our money.
Okay. And how long will it take to implement the system?
We believe the system will be online by April of 2012, and we'll have --
2012?
Yeah.
So it'll take more than a year to implement it?
Less than a year.
Less than a year. This coming April.
April, okay.
And some ongoing support cleanup items will take us through the end of the calendar year 2012.
And we shouldn't, is there a contingency amount on here?
I don't believe so. I think this is a professional services contract.
I've seen many professional services contracts where staff has come back for change of order and additional funding. Do you anticipate anything of that sort?
I don't. If, in the course of this project, the owner, that is the city, identifies additional work to be done, which we don't anticipate at this time, we'll come back to council and ask for approval for additional work, and, believe me, it will be justified. At this point in time, we believe we have a very good, very comprehensive proposal.
The people who have provided, who will be providing the professional services agreement, the professional service is not the agreement. Do they have the experience, have they done this in other cities or other programs or?
Twenty-five other occasions they've had successful implementation.
So not one or two?
Not one or two.
Okay. Thank you. I'll move the item. Thank you.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Menuchaian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Time is oral communications. This first portion is reserved for the three-minute announcements.
Before I call the speakers, and I have three cards, if my colleagues will indulge me, I have a -- me, I have a quick community announcement, which I forgot to make during staff comments, which is to remind everybody that this Saturday night is Cruz Night, which is one of the biggest events in the city of Glendale, starting at about 5:30, I think, somewhere in that area, but going on into the wee hours. You may have, they may be having carmageddon on the west side of town, but we're going to have some hot cars on Bran Boulevard. Usually, we get tens of thousands of people from within Glendale and outside of Glendale to come and see all of the classic cars and hot rods, and my favorite are the antique police cars and ambulances and fire trucks, which are always just so beautiful and so nostalgic. So I, oh, and we have a flyer up. So I do recommend that everyone comes out and joins us. There's going to be entertainment, there's going to be dancing, restaurants, food. We're going to be giving away coupons for the local restaurants and for some of our shops. So it's always a great time to come out and join your neighbors, and the weather's beautiful. So I hope to see everyone there. Thank you. So my first card is Ron Farina, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members and city staff. Very happy to be here this evening because the Red Cross is going to be sponsoring a free citizen CPR training class this coming Saturday, July 23rd, so week after next. It's going to be held at the ABC Studios on Circle 7 Drive. The courses are going to be held at 10:30, 12:00 noon, 2 o'clock, and 3:30. In order to reserve a seat, folks will need to call an 800 number, it's 800-627-7000. Because there are a limited number of seats, we want to make sure that people who want to attend can get there, but word is just starting to come out now, so if you need more information, you can go to www redcrossala.org and reserve a seat now. Again, Saturday, July 23rd, in Glendale, at the ABC office at 500 Circle 7 Drive. Also want to announce that the Red Cross is starting up a nurse assistant training course in our facility on Bran Boulevard in August. We've been looking forward to this for some time. We have the state approval to begin this course, so it should be coming up, and I'll give you more details on my next visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Ron, what time do the classes start?
I'm sorry, the classes will start at 10:30. They're all one hour. It's this new citizen CPR that's hands-only, so they're going to do instruction also on external bleeding and managing shock during an emergency, but it's a hands-only CPR, so the one-hour classes will start at 10:30, 12:00 noon, 2:00 p.m., and 3:30. And if you forget the number, call our office and we'll give it to you. Thank you.
Thanks for...
Thank you. Leon Mayer, followed by Evelyn Horgan, and that will be my last card.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, Members of the Council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the friends at the Glendale Library, and I'm pleased to announce to you, this is my third announcement, that we're fortunate to have Vince Bullosi come to the library on July 27th, 7 o'clock, Central Library, to talk about his newest book, Divinity of Doubt: The God Question. Now, there's few people who have not heard of Vince Bullosi. Those of you who have not heard of Vince Bullosi, I got to tell you a couple things about him. He's known not only throughout the United States, but in Canada and in Western Europe for his prosecution of the Manson case about 50 years ago. And he wrote a book called Helter Skelter, and he was the lawyer who got the conviction of Manson and his family those many years ago, and he wrote a book about it called Helter Skelter, which turned out to be the most well-known, most publicized and published true story, true crime story of all times. That's a claim he has, and it's the truth. He's also written a very important book called Reclaiming History about the assassination of John F. Kennedy. This is a 1,600-page masterpiece that he wrote about the Kennedy assassination, and he put to sleep all the people who claimed, for one reason or another, that it was a conspiracy. So these are two of the many books he's written, two main books, and we're having him come to our library. He's also, as a preview, going to be on the Larry Zarian Show this Thursday night. That's Channel 380. Now, the book, I'm not going to tell you too much about the book because you have to listen to the Zarian Show and come yourself to the library to meet Vince, read over the book, and perhaps read, buy it and sign it. But Vince is an agnostic. He spent two years researching for the material to write this book, and he criticizes in the book religious believers and atheists. And he takes the middle path, and he explains why there's things that we'll never know about the existence of the universe and so forth. And he's joined Socrates, Gertrude Stein, Einstein, Clarence Darrow, and Charles Darwin, who are also agnostics. So this would be a great program to come to. Flyers are available at all the libraries. And I have to answer a question that people ask me once in a while, if I could have a few seconds. We're living in tight economic times, and I don't get paid for doing this. Some people say, how come the library can afford to have you do all you do for the library? We volunteer, along with all the other friends at the library. So thank you for your opportunity to hear my plea and invitation to come free. Parking is free at the auditorium, I mean, at the parking structure. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for your volunteerism. Evelyn Horgan, my last card.
Thank you very much, Mayor Friedman, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you and to the people of Glendale. I'm here to speak on behalf of many seniors and disabled people who are not able to get out either to do shopping, or even if someone brings some food to cook, they're not able to get up and cook. This is the Meals on Wheels Annual Salad Bar Luncheon. The churches of Glendale and Lacrasena have gotten together, this is our 34th year, to put on a salad bar luncheon of salads, deviled eggs, homemade breads. It's an all-you-can-eat banquet of salads that will be given on July 26th, two weeks from today, at the First Presbyterian Church just a block away from you. It'll be open 11 to 1 o'clock, but there will be many, many women and men from churches around in the area. Packets went out to probably 20 different churches, asking people to announce the salad bar luncheon, sign up, and deliver and volunteer on the day of the benefit. Actually, some of the commercial, some of the really fine restaurants have also donated food in the past, salad bars, salads from, I'm sorry. I'll read some of the names of the churches that are participating. First Baptist, Holy Family, Holy Redeemer, Incarnation Catholic, St. Be the Venerable, St. Dominic's, Central Christian, Foothill Christian, Church of the Lighted Window, First Congregational, St. Mark's Episcopal, First Lutheran, Lutheran Church of the Foothills, Salem Lutheran, St. Matthew's Lutheran, Grandview Presbyterian, Lacrasena Presbyterian, Silverlake Presbyterian, Glendale Salvation Army, Crescent Valley United Methodist, First United Methodist, All Saints, and First United Methodist of Burbank. The list is long, but the heart is very, very open for people who need help, who can't afford the Meals on Wheels program. This is a benefit to pay for their luncheon support. Tickets are $8, a donation at the door. We hope that all of you and all of the people of Glendale who hear our announcement will participate and support the Meals on Wheels program that is managed by Salvation Army. Thank you for your time.
Can you just tell us the date and the location one more time?
July 26th, First Presbyterian Church of Glendale. It's from 1, I'm sorry, 11 to 1.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, next item, please.
Next item, under Action Items, at 8A, is the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding Phase II Water SCADA Systems Upgrade Project. A1 is a motion awarding a construction contract to Myron Electric Construction Corp. in an amount of $1,956,036.50 and rejecting all other bids.
We have confusion.
I'm sorry, is there a request? Oh, why don't you come back up and just make the correction so that people don't all go to the wrong church?
I don't want anybody to go to the wrong church after everybody's work. First United Methodist, 1:30, North Kenwood, Glendale. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. All right. Mr. Kabounis.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, this item is, in front of you, is the item to award a construction contract to a contractor named Myron Electric. The scope of the work is the second phase of our SCADA system. The SCADA system is one of the three capital projects that are the highest priority for the water department, in addition to the Diedrich Pipeline and AMI. So AMI, of course, is joint water and electric. So in this particular case, the SCADA is, SCADA is an acronym, stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition, and it's a system of sensors that collect information about the system and a transmission of that data to computers either at the office or in the field that allow operators to operate the system and get information as to what's happening in the system. The design of the upgraded SCADA system, the existing system is over 20 years old and is obsolete. The design of the new system was done by a company that was selected by a competitive bid named MSO Technologies. The first phase of construction was awarded to a company named Prousis. What we have in front of you tonight is the award of a contract for the second phase of construction, which is, staff's recommendation is to award to Myron Electric. This was a competitive bid process. We have five bids. We're very satisfied with the bids. There is some controversy between the first and second bidder, and that's noted in your council report. The city attorneys here can give you more detail from our point of view, from engineering staff, if you will, point of view. We believe that the recommended contractor will do the job very well. With that, your permission, I'd like to invite Doreen Martirosian, city attorney staff, to explain a little bit about the bidding process and the controversy that we have between first and second bidder.
Okay.
She's from the attorneys.
Ms. Martirosian is with city attorney staff.
Good evening, Mayor Friedman, Councilmembers, Dorian Martirosian, Assistant City Attorney, GWP. In this case, the recommendation of staff is to award the contract to Myron. At the time of the public opening of the bids, it appeared the apparent lowest bidder was Prousis, who currently has the Phase 1 contract for the project. Their after-GWP staff members, as they do with all of the bid proposals that they receive, went through each proposal, and they added up the totals, and it turned out that Myron was the lowest responsive bidder. You will see the exhibits that have been attached to the council report, the correspondence between our office, as well as council for Prousis and council for Myron. There's a bit of controversy, however, the city attorney's office is recommending the award of the contract to Myron. I know that there's representatives for both Prousis and Myron here tonight, and they'd like to address council. If there's any question that I could answer for you, I'd be happy to do so.
I wasn't clear, why was there, why did the bid change from? I tried to read it, and I couldn't understand it either, so if you can...
Councilmember Manukian, there was a mathematical error in Myron's bid, an addition, an error in addition in Myron's bid.
On the part of Myron, or the...
Yes, on the part of Myron. The city's bid specs provide the city the discretion to go ahead and take the unit price, and that unit price prevails over the bid total. So that's what the city did, and Myron ended up being the lowest responsive bidder.
Okay, I do have cards, so if there are no questions right now, I'd like to go to the public, and then we can always come back to staff if we have questions. I have two cards. My first card is Jason Thornton, and the last card is Marcia Camone.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. My name is Jason Thornton. I'm an attorney representing Prousis. As you heard, Prousis is the contractor performing the Phase 1 portion of this project, submitted a bid for the Phase 2 portion of the project. And the problem that we'd like to bring to council's attention tonight is that the proposed award, as we see it, is inconsistent with the requirements of the bid documents that were published and upon which the bidders relied in submitting their bids. In fact, the bids that were submitted and the procedure that was identified in the public bid documents for award of the contract was that award will be made on the basis of a lump sum-based bid. This is not a unit price contract, and the difference we see with the recommendation of staff and what Prousis is requesting the council do tonight has to do with the difference between a lump sum and a unit price contract. In the Instructions to Bidders, Item 18, it identifies that the city will award the contract based on the lowest base bid, including all alternates. All the bidders were required to provide with their bid documents a base bid, it was a part of the Form F4, where they were required to declare that they were going to perform all the work on the project for a fixed price. That's a lump sum dollar amount. In this case, the base bid that was submitted by Myron was $1,787,000. That base bid was $7,400 higher than the base bid that was submitted by Prousis. What the city has done after the fact is looked at a spreadsheet that was part of the bid documents attached, but not part of the base bid, not specifically the dollar amount that you come up with, where certain unit costs were identified for quantities. And the city is taking a portion of the bid documents, not the bid documents that specify the basis for the award of the contract, but another portion, and they're recalculating the base bid of Myron, in our view improperly, based on the unit costs that were identified. And the difficulty with the city's reliance on that specification is that that specification is designed to apply to a unit price contract, where you have engineer's estimate, unit cost, extended price. You sum up those extended prices, and you get to a total dollar amount. That's not what you have in this case. In fact, there is no, if you look at the Spare Parts Cost Sheet, there is no column for extended price. There is no summing up of the extended price, and that's the amount of the bid. The amount of the bid and the specified method for award is the base bid form, and the base bid submitted by Myron was $7,400 higher than the base bid submitted by Prousis. We'd recommend the council reject the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia Camone? And I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. What we have here is...
If you could just state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Marcia Kamine. I'm with the firm of Kamine Collings &amp; Phillips, and we represent Myron Electric. What we have here is an extension. What the Spare Parts Page, you have a Spare Parts Page, and there are so many of the various spare parts, the unit price for each of those spare parts was specified. There was no extension, so if you had five tires, for instance, I'm just using that as a simplification, and the contractor put down per tire $10, the extension would have been $50, but there was no column for the extension. When the engineer went through, what he did is he took the amount of the unit price and multiplied it by the number of that item, and then created an extension column, which did not exist in the bid documents. That extension column was then added up and came to a sum total. That number, whatever that was, was supposed to be inserted on the bid page, item number 34. 34. What happened here is, through dyslexia or whatever, the contractor in the rush to get the documents in, added up the extensions wrong and then put the wrong number in at 34. So, what staff went through and did is they re-added, which is perfectly consistent with your specifications, which provide for the use of extensions. These spare parts were part of the bid documents. Addendum Number Three specifically specified that. In addition, the addendums were supposed to be included as part of the bid documents. There's a page on the face sheet of your bids that says, "Did you receive the addendums?" And the bidder is expected to check the boxes, which indicate that they've received the addendums. Prousis checked those boxes. However, there was also a requirement in your bid documents that requires that the bidders submit copies of the addendums signed, that says they've read them and they understand them. And that's really critical here, because the fact that Prousis didn't do that indicates that they may, they will be able to be relieved of their bid under the Public Contract Code, because this was a mistake. So, they had an unfair competitive advantage. So, you couple the fact that they had an unfair competitive advantage, so they are not a responsive bidder, with the fact that the bid of Myron is consistent with your bid documents, and I would respectfully submit that the award should be made to Myron Electric. We've discussed this at length in the attachments to your bid package, and I'm sure you've read them, so I'm not going to bore you any further. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have questions from staff, actually.
Okay, Mr. Manukian.
Why switch horses in midstream? I mean, the other firm, Prousis, is it? Prousis is doing Phase One. Why do you want to go out to bid for Phase Two to someone else? Isn't it better to have the same firm do Phase Two as well as Phase One?
Councilmember Manukian, the practice is not unusual, and it's designed to give the city better value for its money. You proceed with the first phase with a contractor, and then bid out the second phase, you get more relevant prices and a qualified contractor.
Doesn't that, doesn't it cost you more to get a new firm to figure out what was done in Phase One and continue with Phase Two?
Well, they're working off of the same design.
It's basically a database.
They're working off of a single design. In this particular case, it sure seems like it's going to cost us more, but the general idea is that the second bid comes in for the second phase of the work and could be just as if not more competitive than a single bid for the entire phase would have been.
Do we have a habit of verifying the addition on contracts?
That is standard practice.
You do?
Our staff does that all the time for all bids received, and in this particular case, our staff simply approached Myron and said, "We're not getting the same total. Please confirm your total."
And if they made a mistake on their bid documents, what makes you think they won't make a mistake on the implementation of Phase Two? Which is almost $2 million.
My understanding of the process, well, I have a lot of respect for the magnitude of the contract, and I feel for both Myron and Prousis. This is significant, and is very significant for the city as well. This is, the SCADA is really important for us. Through the difficult times we're going through, we've preserved this project as one we want to move forward with. We believe that a mathematical error done on a bid document is not unheard of. It happens quite often. There is a tremendous flurry of activity that happens at the end of a bidding process, when they're putting their numbers together in their shop. So, it's not uncommon for a bidder to have an error in their sheet. We do not view that as a sign that they will therefore be prone to errors in the installation of the work. Actually, Myron Electric, while they may have made that mistake, is very qualified. I would say just as is Prousis. So, I don't look at this mathematical error as an indication of a flaw in the contractor's ability.
This system sounds like a computerized maintenance management system, doesn't it?
Not to me. Perhaps to someone who is not familiar with all the acronyms and the inside of the business, this is supervisory control.
Isn't it a computer maintenance management system?
No, this is Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition.
And the difference between one and the other?
A computerized...
The reason why I ask is, we just approved a half a million dollar contract for computer maintenance management system. And this is another...
The maintenance system takes data about the equipment and facilities that we have and helps us manage them in the most cost-effective way, maintain them in the most cost-effective way. SCADA is all about how is the system operating and giving us control to change operations if things are different. One is maintenance, the other one's operations and system control.
How long did it take us to implement Phase One, and how long will it take us to implement Phase Two?
I'm not as familiar with the schedule of SCADA Phase Two. SCADA Phase One, the construction has been, I believe, six months so far.
Has it been completed? Your satisfaction?
It's still ongoing. I'm not aware of any complaints that we have with Prousis.
Any other questions? Any comments?
My comments generally, and I appreciate the remarks from both sides. It appears that it was just an error in calculations. I don't see anything nefarious about this. I don't think we went back and tipped off Myron that, you know, come in, come in $7,000 less and you're going to get the job, if in fact all we said was, "Your numbers don't add up." I find that totally legitimate. Furthermore, I don't think we should be implying that there should be a sole source, just because someone has done Phase One. We shouldn't say, "You've done Phase One, therefore, here you go. You've got Phase Two in the bag." I mean, I think we owe a duty to our ratepayers to continue to try and get them the lowest price on these, and even if it's a matter of several thousand dollars, you know, that's the process that we have committed to. We should continue with that. I mean, I feel sorry, it's a very large sum of money, and the difference between the two bids is very infinitesimal, almost, but that's just the way it turned out. I don't see, I don't see any reason not to continue with that. You're on, aren't you?
Any other comments? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
Move 8A1.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Manukian?
No.
Dorian?
Yes.
Harrow?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
I'll just say quickly that, given that both firms seem to be equally qualified, I think that there's no reason not to go with the lowest bidder, so yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item.
Madam Mayor, just, the reason why I voted no, just, I'm just not comfortable with everything that happened during the whole process, so that's why. It's not to reflect in any way negative or positive on the firms that bid on the project, so I just want to make that clear. I just didn't feel comfortable in voting yes at this point.
Okay, next item.
Under hearings, in 9A is Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding levy and collection of annual assessment for the city of Glendale's North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2011-2012. At 9A1 is a resolution approving the engineer's annual levy report. 9A2 is a resolution ordering the levy and collection of annual assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, the issue that we brought June 28th was the preparation of the engineer's report tonight as the hearing for that report and the annual levy for the North San Fernando Corridor Landscape Maintenance District. So, if we want to hold a hearing, staff is available for any questions. The total assessment is $77,416. It covers the maintenance, watering of the lawns, the trees, the hardscapes, maintenance of the benches, trash bins, et cetera. As stated in the staff report, the budget's broken down into five different zones and assessed at different amounts in each zone on equivalent benefit units, and there's a whole process that the engineers go through to assign those benefit units to come up with a total assessment. So, with that, we can answer any questions after the hearing.
Are there any questions?
Mayor, do you want to open the hearing?
I will. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Any questions? Mr. Najarian?
I just want to confirm through the city attorney that these, that this district was created by a vote of the property owners, that they themselves were presented with proposed set of improvements, and they took a vote, they voted and assessed themselves, essentially.
It's required, yes.
I don't want it to be implied or inferred that this is something that we imposed on the district and without any input or ratification by the homeowner, by the property owners, that this is being forced on them.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, move 9A1 and 2.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Manukian?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Harrow?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Friedman?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item, we return to oral communications. Discussion is limited time, is not part of the agenda. Each speaker at this point is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And the city manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and a report.
Okay, I have several cards. If there's anyone here who wants to speak, who hasn't thrown in a card, please do so now. First card is Cooper Coleman, followed by Sipon Ballarian.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers and staff, my name is Cooper Coleman, and I'm here to speak in objection to the proposed placement of a joint-use soccer field at Columbus Elementary School. I believe that placement would create an unnecessary and harsh negative impact on the surrounding multi-use family residential structures, and I happen to live in one of them, that that soccer field would be a mere six and a half, five and a half feet from my residence. I think that would create a very harsh environment, considering the schedule of operation proposed for that soccer field. I think that placing that joint-use soccer field at Pacific Park would meet all of the objectives identified in the draft environmental impact report, and would satisfy every need of the city and alleviate any negative impacts on surrounding residential areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sipon Ballarian, followed by Barry Allen.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, staff members, community members. My name is Sipon Ballarian. I'm a current student at Clark-Magnan High School, and like any other high school, hate and racism still exist on various levels. At school, we are constantly taught to work together and treat everyone equal. Two weeks ago, I attended my very first Glendale City Council meeting, where I witnessed numerous community members come up and state derogatory and racist comments about the Armenian-American community, especially the indifference to issues such as trafficking Armenia. To be frank, this is not what I expected from city meetings. So, I'm just here to truly thank councilmembers Aron Najarian and Rafi Manukian for showing concern to this group within our community, and I hope that in the future, other councilmembers will join them in putting a stop to such statements in hopes of bringing harmony to our city and these chambers. So, again, thank you, councilmembers Najarian and Manukian, for inspiring me to come up and speak here today. That's all.
Okay, Barry Allen, followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor, council, staff. I'm Barry Allen. Couple of things. First of all, Thursday is the Vanguardians Community Forum, and it's going to be on how the budget and fee structure will make Glendale even less business-friendly, while it pays the way for new special tax districts. If you haven't seen how the city council is balancing the budget on your shoulders, you need to read and heed. Reservations are a must. Make them. You can use the information on this card. Hopefully, it is seen. Yeah, there we go. It's at Foxy's on Thursday, July 14th, at 8:00 a.m., and Foxy's is across from the Americana, and certainly all city officials and staff, and of course, the council are always invited. Now, I was also reviewing the city's ethics code, GMC 2.83, while contemplating the events of the last 18 months, wondering why friends and colleagues were avoiding the ethics ordinance. In January 2010, then-councilmember Draymond ragged on actress Eva LaRue for having a gate out of compliance for her protection from a stalker. The FBI supported her story. Draymond mentioned that he was living in Rosemont at the time due to a flood at his condo. Not one of his colleagues asked any questions of his revelation. Didn't you care? Or did you already know about it? Weren't you curious? Or did you know about it after discussions in closed sessions or at other meetings? When the issue came up again and again, there was not one question or a statement of commiseration, sad when you worked so closely with John. A year later, in January 2011, I filed a complaint about the lack of building permits with Neighborhood Services. In apparent violation of the ethics code, Draymond met with Mr. Howard and Mr. Hargani to determine the best way to handle the matter, resulting in a violation of the informant ethics code. On five Tuesdays in March, I showed pictures and asked questions to, no noticeable reaction other than that by Draymond. Finally, there was some movement by the city in an inspection after Draymond had been voted out of office. Perhaps there is some truth in what I was given to understand by parties requesting anonymity, that Mr. Draymond told you all, "If I go down, you all go down with me." Sometimes your lack of interest will give you away. And on a related matter, the alleged embezzlement by Mr. Draymond is being handled by the Glendale Police Department. The matter should be handled by an outside agency like the county sheriff or the DA. After all, there is a conflict of interest, and the conflict of interest is very simple. Mr. Draymond voted on MOUs, on pay raises, on negotiations for the police department, and received money from their PAC. So, you know, we turned our file on the same thing over to the outside agency that's already investigating in Glendale. And in the next issue of Vanguard, we're going to read about who and why, at whose behest, that Mr. Weaver was supported by the GPOA PAC. So, that's coming up in the next Vanguard. I'm Barry Allen. Thank you.
Mike Mohill, followed by Richard Espiritu.
My name is Mike Mohill. Smoke and mirrors budgeting. At the recent Northwest Homeowners Association meeting, guest speaker, city manager, Jim Starburg, finally admitted to the public the current public pension system cannot survive. Council critics have said these same words in the past, but they fell on deaf ears to both the council and to the city manager. In 2008, the city manager and council told the public the budget was not balanced and gave the city employees over $8 million in pay raises, salary increases which would increase their pension benefits in years ahead. By the end of 2008, the same city manager came back to the council and the public and told us we needed to cut city services by $10 million, but said nothing about asking the unions to give back their recent pay raises. Is Mr. Starburg planning to give back his recent pensions to the people of Glendale? Is he going to start showing an example? Former council candidate Bruce Philpott performed years of public service administrative duties, such as serving as passing a police chief and commanding a part of the fire department, and performing the duties of a special assistant to the city manager. Bruce Philpott suggested, as an option to the Glendale Fire Chief Harold Skoggins, a proposal to radically change the emergency medical response model, but he was ignored by the powers-to-be. Apparently fearing the strength of Philpott's model, Chief Skoggins declined an invitation to appear before a community forum to discuss the differences between the two models. City council has pretended to hear Philpott's suggestion of lowering the number of firefighters from four to three, as practiced in Los Angeles County and in most other fire departments in Los Angeles County. Philpott's model would save the city $8 million annually. That would go a long way in funding youth athletic programs, the Montrose Park Parade, the City Rose Parade float, and with $9.5 million left over to reduce the growing pressure on the general fund. The present change the fire management has given the council is nothing more than a subtle attempt to practice to protect the rank and file of the department rather than the interest of the public, who will continue to receive declining services and at the same time, pay more for them. To reduce labor expenses, the city manager and council... To reduce labor expenses, the city manager and council continue to pat themselves on the back and say how magnanimous the unions have been to make concessions on their contracts, but in reality, no hard bargaining occurred. Since four of the present council members either have received campaign monies from the unions, been endorsed, or received benefits from the union PACs like Mr. Weaver recently. Even the suggestion by the public to outsource jobs continues to fall on deaf ears. Since the city council has refused to hard bargain with the unions, a few weeks ago, council just kicked the can down the road again, as they had been doing for the past several years. According to the seniority system, the unions allow their newest employee to be pink slip first. Quote, "We eat our young," one safety officer told me a few years past. "Yes, last hired is first fired," spoke the officer. Instead of having a job performance evaluation with senior officers to see who would be doing the better job for the person, the present system perpetuates the $100,000 a year membership club, ensuring pension significantly greater than in the private sector. When I told the people John Draymond was deceitful, many people rebuffed me. In the weeks and months that followed, it was proven to be true. I'm here to tell the public that our city manager does not walk on water, and after he too has gone, the public will find that he was as deceitful, just like John Draymond. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Espiritu, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Once again, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council and staff. I am Richard Espiritu. Tonight, I'm going to speak about something called greed. The issue of greed is not only money, also power. And in the subject of greed, there is also the subject of lust, which could be women, excess of food, also excessive alcohol. I want to quote from Luke, Chapter 12, Verse 14. Be on your guard against all kinds of greed. A man's life does not consist of the abundance of his power and his possession. I hope the city council remembers this, as I'm hearing a lot of stories. And one of the interesting comments that was made, and I had to go into the archives to look at it. Mr. Starburg made a comment a while back, that the most important thing is the salaries of the employees. Is that for power? Or is that for his own? And I can't say this really, but because I think he deserves the money he gets paid as our city manager. At least he's not getting paid what the former city manager in Bell was getting. But that does ring of power, okay? So, in the future, there's going to be a lot of things coming down on this city. Sacramento, as you said, Madam Mayor, today is coming up with some very strange ideas, and I don't know if that's a retaliation or a whiplash of what went on in the city of Bell, but what did go on in the city of Bell was corruption. And Sacramento is looking at corruption and overuse of power. They may be going overboard on it, but we need to look at ourselves when we're looking at what we do in the city council and as staff members. So, remember Luke 12:14. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret Hammond, and then Roberta Medford's my last card.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, longtime resident of Glendale. Remember, keep Glendale clean and beautiful. All you need to do to help in that cause, call Free Bulky Item Pickup, 818-548-3916. It works. So, use that number and help to keep the city, our city, the jewel city. On Thursday, July 28th, the Summer Night on the Plaza will be held from 6:00 to 9:00 o'clock, and it's $20, and there are nearly 20 restaurants will be providing food, all within the one plaza, drinks, coffee, et cetera, and entertainment, live entertainment, all included in the price. We have a photo contest, and it's open to everybody in the city, and there are $500 in prizes. You have to get it in by the 21st. Get your contest offers in by the 21st. And there is a silent bid on two tickets from Southwest worth $800, which will be, again, available that evening. This event raises funds for the school involvement, our involvement from our committee, the city involvement, for activities such as the poster contest. So, that's one of the reasons that it's important that we do support this. I don't know how many of you read the LA Times article regarding the marijuana, the ruling that was made by the court, that there was no proof, as a matter of fact, the opposite, that there was no proof of medicinal benefit, and therefore, keep it on the dangerous drug list. So, I'm glad that we did that, that our city voted, and we did do that, and do not have the clinics or whatever you call them, shops, open here. The other thing that I want to say is that was good, I don't know how many of you have had to get your driver's license renewed, but the DMD on Glen Oaks is open, and it's, I had to go to Pasadena twice before it opened on Glen Oaks, and it's like night and day, so it's really terrific. They treat you like real people up there, I'm glad to say. And, you know, the city of Vernon is being investigated by HUD because of faulty handling of the federal funds in the housing. There's going to be a lot of heads rolling on that, and if there isn't enough, if the investigation by the city, or any city, is not being taken care of, there's going to be a lot of more problems coming up in our cities. And, you know, finally, I'd like to say this, and I've said it before, and some people don't understand it, that our right under the First Amendment is guaranteed, is freedom of speech. Whether it brings up subjects not in favor of the city council, or other people in the city, or whatever, it is our right to speak up. So, we should not be bash for that. I think a lot of people that come here should be awarded, and rewarded, for bringing up subjects that otherwise would not, the public would not be aware of. So, I am going to be continuing my visit to you as much as I can, as long as I'm able. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Roberta Medford's my last card.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Friedman, and council staff and audience. I have two things. I would like to again plug Cruz Night, and I want to particularly announce the gala grand opening of the War Budget Cafe at Cruz Night. We will be on the south side of California, between Brand and Maryland, which is just a few steps in east of Brand. And the War Budget Cafe will be serving up good food for thought. Since it's the War Budget Cafe, of course, we won't have any money to give you anything to eat, but we hope to make a worthwhile presence there, and we want to invite you all. On the menu of the War Budget Cafe are specials ranging in price from the most reasonable at $18 million. That's the exact amount, or the approximate amount, of the deficit of Glendale. And $18 million at the War Budget Cafe will get you a full hour of the war in Iraq and Afghanistan. Or for the bigger spenders, you can go all the way up to $4 trillion, and that will cover the total costs now, and including all future costs of both these wars. For people that like to stay in the mid-range, we have some yummy weapon systems in the mid-billions, many featuring rich sauces of cost overruns and spicy failed performance tests. Oh, well, if these don't appeal, we also do have a healthy alternatives menu of peace messages that you can sign and send to President Obama. These are all free, and we will even be paying the postage. Plus, you can spin the big wheel and win a peace prize. So, please, stop by on California, east of Brand, between Brand and Maryland, on Saturday night at Cruz Night, and visit the War Budget Cafe. It is brought to you by the Glendale Peace Vigil, the Montrose Peace Vigil, and Glendale Education and Social Justice Advocates. Thank you. Now, my next thing. I am delighted to present to you, Mayor and council, a special proclamation, and it includes original artwork by a wonderful La Crisena ceramics artist and educator named Jean Laverie, and I will just read it. Be it resolved, Mayor Friedman, city councilmembers Quintero, Najarian, Mnuchin, and Weaver, whereas you have helped make the world a safer place by joining thousands of cities across the globe in Mayors for Peace, which works to completely eliminate nuclear weapons worldwide. And whereas, most of you have advanced the cause of peace by approving the U.S. Conference of Mayors' War Dollars Home Resolution, calling for a swift end to wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, and to use the tax revenue instead to build a new green economy. And whereas, local residents are grateful and proud that Glendale, California has gone on record in support of both these peaceful initiatives, we hereby present this proclamation to honor your forward-looking and thoughtful service to the citizens of Glendale, California, and to people everywhere who desire peace. And I'm presenting this, this 12th day of July 2011, on behalf of the Montrose Peace Vigil, the Glendale Peace Vigil, and Glendale Education Social Justice Advocates. And I hope it's all right if I give it to the clerk to present to you. Thank you.
Thank you. You've given out a lot of proclamations. I think that's the first time since I've been here that someone's given one to us.
Yes, thank you.
You deserve it. That's my last card. Before we go to new business, are there any council responses or comments? Okay, seeing none, we have new business.
I move that the city attorney be and is hereby authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize legal services of the Zapia Law Firm, Edward Zapia, to represent the interests of the appointing authority before the Civil Service Commission in a personnel matter, and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Mnuchin.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Caro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Friedman.
Yes. With that, we will adjourn in the memory of Roy Coleman.
Second.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
I move that in second.